Senator Penglinen.
Hello?
And currently in the hall is Senator Penglinen, Senator Cuthberts, Senator Tenorio, Senator Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Rektor, Senator Tadegui, Senator Ogden. We have two, four, six, eight. We have a call.
Okay, now that is the agenda. Can somebody please take Senator Ruspicio because we're going to start and just waiting for the agenda. Okay, Tom, you're going to do the interprisie? Are you okay? Uh, the one thing. Okay, Fanoghi tomorrow? Eddie, and Fanoghi tomorrow? Okay, very good. That's good.
Here.
Okay, good. Since you came in late, you're going to have to do the national anthem.
Senator Kaukou.
Okay, go ahead. Good. Now where is duty or is that here? So, if it's not your... Yeah, where do you have it? See if I have it. Do you... Oh wait, because they're doing the agenda so... I have this one. You want me to bring it? This one I break into. Okay. Tom is going to do the interprisie. One thing, Senator Kaukou and Espaldon, the national anthem. And the prayer. Who would like to lead the prayer? Amen. Atentin, Elas Latron Guahan is called to order. Would everyone please rise for prayer led by Senator Tenorio?
Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Lord, help guide our legislature this morning and the representatives of the people of Guam as we proceed into the estimations of our revenue and the appropriate disposition of those monies for the interest of all the people of Guam so that the services of government help with every person on this island in their health, safety, and education and other well-being. In your name we pray. Amen. Name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Can I ask Senator Ada if you can lead us in the interprisie?
In the interprisie. Ginenimas tak kilo, gihinasoko. Imas takhalo, ngikurasonho. Zanimas figo, naninasi nahu. Uufresin maisa zu para baihu protehi, zanhu defendi, ihinengi, ikutura, ilinguahi. Ihiri, ihano, zanitanu tomorrow. Niiren shaku, diretsu, ginenazu ustata. Esti huafirma, ngihilo ibiblia, zanipandehahu ibanderangguahan.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. And for the Fanoghi tomorrow, if Senator Kaukou can lead that and Senator Espaldon if he can lead us in the national anthem.
Finowitamoru, budhitano ta. Antatmatunana, itoru hiluga. Para hiora, para hitoria. Abiba hismasse para. Para hiora, para hitoria. Abiba hismasse para. Toru itempu ipas para hita. Kontrakviligu, napahansapoham. Juus protehi hislanwan. Kontrakviligu, napahansapoham. Juus protehi hislanwan. Oh say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose starships and bright stars drew the pair of the lovers by? For the rambles we watched were so gallant and sweet. And the rocket's red glare, the monster's scene in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you very much. I just realized we have a chorus here now so maybe the next time we can have the three again and do the other songs. Thank you very much. Can I ask the clerk if she could please take roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call. Senator Ada?
Here.
Senator Ogden? Senator Ada? I'm in Ogden. Senator Blas? Senator Kaukou?
Here.
Senator Cruz?
Here.
Senator Espaldon?
Here.
Senator Cuthberts?
Here.
Senator Munia Barnes?
Nadia.
Senator Palacios?
Nadia.
Senator Penglinen?
Ready.
Senator Rektor?
Here.
Senator Ruspicio? Senator Tadegui?
Here.
Senator Tenorio? Speaker Martin? Present. Madam Speaker, I wish to report the Aresac oral. Thank you very much. I'd like to call on the Majority Leader for the approval of the Legislative Journal.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning. First, I move that we adopt the session agenda dated August 10, 2009.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated 6/29 to 7/209 and 7/14. 209 subject to approval or corrections.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Likewise, there are also messages from the Governor and I move the same, that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Also, reports of standing committees. I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
There are no reports of select committees so if I may proceed to the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 3175, 30-175COR, to Bill 204-30COR, Resolution 159COR,
On that motion?
Be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Were there motions?
Yeah, under... First, I move that Senator Frank Blas Jr. be excused from sessions. He was on his way. Okay. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill Number 58 be placed in the second reading file.
On that motion, to place Bill 58 in the second reading file without any objections, so ordered.
Okay, thank you. There are no other motions, Madam Speaker?
Are there any other motions? Someone can make a motion to resolve and to commit the hold?
Thank you. There are no other motions. I defer to the Appropriations Chair to make that motion.
Senator Penglinen, you are recognized.
To just must say, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, we completed the Budget Bill this morning, Bill Number 58, as substituted by the committee. It's currently being copied at this time. I apologize that we were a little bit late in getting it to the copy machine. It's about 161 pages long and as such, we underestimated the time it would take to print it but we didn't overestimate the revenues. So, I hope that you'll indulge me for just a few minutes while we check on the status of it. There is a committee report, of course, that had accompanied the bill and that's been filed this morning as well, but also we're making copies of that. And again, that is quite voluminous. Bill 150, or Bill 58 generally includes an appropriation at the agency level in the main bill that sets out the object categories and then, of course, all the other appropriations to all the departments and agencies of the government of Guam. And that's the reason for the volume of the bill.
Do you want to just make the motion to resolve?
I'd like to resolve and then make a motion that the body resolve into the committee as a whole to begin discussion on Bill 58, as substituted by the committee. And then, once we resolve into the committee as a whole, just call for a short recess while we set up also our presentation and then wait for the bill.
I'd just like to add, the good Speaker of the mind, that the Appropriations Chair chair the committee as a whole. Although it's obvious, I'd just like to make it clear.
Yes, so on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. We will take a brief recess to set up and at the same time, wait for some copies and if Sergeant Arms can work with the chairperson to see who he would like to call in for the budget so we'll be in a brief recess.
For those of you who may know, Dr. Reed Edinus just passed away this morning. So I can get more of her than... He was mayor from... Another announcement, guys. Is that there's a luncheon meeting tomorrow, a working lunch meeting tomorrow at 12:00 to 12 o'clock at the Alfriger for the Senators, the MCAs, and the Governor's office. I was told, I did ask, whatever.
Not hard.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, just...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Before we begin discussions on Bill 58, I beg your indulgence and the body's indulgence. I felt to make a general motion regarding resolutions, so I move that we momentarily rise from the committee of the whole and go into motions.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered. Senator Espinoza, you're recognized on the motion then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved that all resolutions of commendatory and congratulatory or condolence in nature introduced in today's session and for the remainder of this legislative session. I move that they be adopted and that the legal counsel and the clerk be permitted to make all the necessary changes with the authors' concurrence and that all senators be co-sponsors of these resolutions.
On the motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. I now move back down to resolve as committee of the whole.
So, the motion ends to resolve back from the committee of the whole, so ordered.
One hour and a half of day. This committee of a whole is now convened on the matter of the discussion of Bill Number 58 as substituted by the committee. Bill 58 sets aside or sets out the appropriation levels for the government of Guam for the fiscal year 2010. Just a general pleasantries, I guess you might want to call it. I do want to express my appreciation, of course, to my staff, the Office of Finance and Budget, which was instrumental in the preparation of this budget. But much more importantly, I also wanted to express my appreciation to the administration and members of the administration, the management team, and the entities set by statute enacted by this body to assist the preparation of the revenue projections and fiscal policy of this government. And in that respect, I specifically refer to legislation that was authored by members of this body that are here today. Senator Espinoza was very instrumental, of course, in putting together the working group by statute of the Special Accounting Service and the Special Economic Service that assists the Office of Finance and Budget and coordinates for the preparation of the revenue projections of this government of Guam. The Special Accounting Service consists of the senior-level management staff of the technical experts within the government of Guam. It consists of members of the body for the Special Accounting Group would be the Controller of the Department of Administration, the Chief of Taxpayer Services at the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Budget Analyst Supervisor at the Bureau of Budget and Management, the Chief Planner at the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, and the Chief Information Officer out of the Office of the Governor. And of course, the Director of the Office of Finance and Budget chairs the committee. The Special Economic Service Group is a group of the senior policy people within the administration. And the Special Economic Service Group consists of the Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, the Director of the Department of Administration, the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, the Director of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, the Chief Planner of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, the Chief Economist of the Department of Labor, the Research Administrator at the Guam Visitors Bureau, and the Director of Office of Finance and Budget. And I will have the Director of the Office of Finance and Budget go through the process of their meeting and inform you of the information provided and discussed during that meeting to get us to where we're at today with the revenue projection that's been presented to you in the bill today. My staff was also very instrumental in that. And of course, the Director of the Office on Finance and Budget sits to my left here, Mr. Chris Bedasi. And to his left sits Ms. Lisa Cipollone, who was the Chief of Staff in the Office of Finance, I mean, in the Office of the Committee of Appropriations, the committee. This year, we actually had a mix of old and new with regards to the Office of Finance, Budget, and Staff. We were fortunate to be able to bring on board at the beginning of the term in the Office of Finance and Budget, the former Chief Economist for the Office of Finance and Budget, which worked, of course, with Senator Eddie Calvo during his tenure in that office, Mr. Henry Cruz, and participated and, of course, contributed greatly to the work that we'd done. Unfortunately, he's not here to join us this morning. He actually, during the middle of this whole process, had to leave off island to take care of a medical emergency. I do want to say that he's fine. He went through a fairly substantial medical procedure, but he has come through it and our prayers were with him the whole time. But it set us back a little. But it set us back a little bit because, of course, the work that he did in the, in the Office of Finance and Budget under Senator Calvo, we continued and carried on the, the economic model that he had developed at that time. And we worked with him and continued to refine that model. But he left us in the middle of the budget, but he left us in good hands and very capable hands in, with Mr. Bedasi. We also had the services of Mr. Alduenez, a longtime Budget Analyst, Legislative Employee in the Finance Department, as well as the administration in, within the Government of Guam, also got many years of experience. And then we picked up some brand-new and eager-to-learn, but very capable people. We picked up two young ladies who I feel very happy about their decision to join our staff. I think one of the things we wanted to do was bring in new individuals, develop them, give them the guidance and the training, and that, you know, have them move up into our government. Our government needs to try and bring in new people to replace the aging workforce that we have. I mean, it's nothing new that is faced by any corporation in America, and the government is no different. We have a lot of, in the early-out program, if you talk to many of the different departments and agencies, we have many, many senior management staff, technical people that have left government service under that early-out program. And we didn't have enough of a planning process to bring on new people to take their place. This is one of the things we wanted to, and targeted to do in the Office of Finance and Budget. And we were able to bring on board Ms. Selena Onidera and Ms. Angelica Okada, and they have really come through for us in the preparation of this budget. And I want to thank them and recognize them for their effort and dedication to the office, as well, of course, in service to the people of Guam through the work that we do in the office. And of course, our regular office staff, Ms. Lisquichu and Mr. Larry Cruz and Mr. Scott Mendiola, all of these individuals contributed to the work that you see before you today. At this time, I would like to go ahead then and turn over the preliminary discussion on the Bill Fifty-Eight. I do want to, before we proceed with that, we will have Mr. Chris Bedasi walk through and explain the methodology and the process of developing and adopting the revenue of the Government of Guam that you see has been incorporated in the bill. Before we proceed with that, though, I would like to set up, of course, the rules for this committee as a whole and the conducting of this committee as a whole as we go through the process of adopting the appropriations for the operations of this Government of Guam. The Office of Finance and Budget will begin with the presentation of the revenue and the findings of the Special Accounting Service and the Special Economic Service, and that will be conducted by Mr. Chris Bedasi. After the completion of the presentation, I will proceed then to present a summary of the committee and the structure of the bill on a section-by-section basis, and that won't take too long. And then the senators will be recognized in the order that they raise their hands and allow them to talk, basically, and discuss the general approach to their general observations on the bill itself, and we'll allow five minutes for that. We will then go into the adoption of the each section of the bill, beginning with the revenue section. And again, we'll limit discussion on that to five minutes per senator, inclusive of the amendments on the floor and inclusive of the time it takes to respond to the questions presented. The all-agency positions on the budget were obtained in an oral and written testimony at public hearings that were conducted by the Committee on Appropriations over the last couple of months. Normal practice has been that we cut the time for the submission of additional testimony during a committee hearing on a subject matter. But because of the fact that this is the budget bill of the Government of Guam, the committee remained in constant dialogue with departments and agencies throughout this process until the time the bill was filed with the clerk and the committee report was finalized. The committee report is being copied for you at this time. And that this process took approximately two months over the summer, in which we scheduled public hearings every single day to go through the presentations by the executive branch, departments and agencies, the judiciary, and the other instrumentalities of the Government of Guam that are funded through the annual appropriation budget that is passed by this body. It, of course, took eight members. It will, of course, take eight votes to pass any action by this body, including, of course, amendments, et cetera. With the exception of the Guam Visitors Bureau budget, most of the appropriations from TAF were added, of course, through the public hearing conducted by the Chairman of the Committee on Tourism and the bill that was introduced. So the section of the bill that dealt with the appropriations for the Guam Visitors Bureau and out of the territorial, Tourism Attraction Fund, I'm sorry, and out of the Tourism Attraction Fund was as a result of the public hearing conducted by the Committee on Tourism, in which I joined the chairman at that hearing. And they were pursuing, of course, to the review and the recommendation of the Office of Finance and Budget. With regards to floor amendments, the budget is currently balanced, i.e. the revenues match appropriations. I do want to say that if, if there is an error in computation, which I do not say is impossible, it will be lower than the total revenue in the bill. We will not err on appropriating more than the revenues that have been adopted. And I want to say that the Committee on Finance has adopted the requirement that 2% of the total revenue of the Government of Guam be set aside for deficit reduction pursuant to the statutes. Any amendment to increase or add new appropriation must be accompanied by an amendment to cut another appropriation or amend the revenue projection as recommended by OFB and the Special Accounting Service and the government, of, group of the Government of Guam. As required by standing rules and statutes, no provision shall be allowed to be added to the bill which has not had a public hearing. And no provision shall be allowed to be added to the bill which are unrelated to the revenue or the appropriations contained in this bill. I'm requesting that all of floor amendments be in writing and transmitted to the Chair, the clerks, the legal counsel, and all senators before we begin discussing them. The Sergeant-at-Arms is going to be requested to restrict entry to the session hall, to the session staff, to the staff of the Office of Finance and Budget, to the senatorial staff of, at the request of the senators, will be allowed, of course, and others at the request of the body will be permitted into the session hall. There will be no reconsideration of any section or floor amendment shall be made in the absence of those persons present who made the original amendment and the original deliberation. So to reconsider an amendment that's been adopted, I'm going to ask that we provide deference and respect to the person who originally made that amendment so that they're here to continue to defend the actions of that body. And it's just really out of courtesy and respect to our members that we don't do something while they're not here, having originally made those amendments. And attendance shall be noted by the clerks at the start of every section of the bill and on every voice vote. All votes on the floor amendments I am requesting shall be by a show of hands or a roll call at the discretion of the Chair, or of course, by invoking any section of the standing rules that would allow for the roll call vote. And a voting sheet of all votes, even those by hand, shall be kept by the clerks on any action taken by this body during this session. I do want to thank you very much and hope that, and, and ask for your continued cooperation throughout the whole process. We know that the public hearing was a long process, and, and I know that each of us had other obligations during that time, but I do want to thank each and every one of you for your attendance and participation during the public hearing on the specific sections and departments and agency requests that were presented to the Committee on Appropriations by the executive branch. And again, want to extend my appreciation for your participation. One special note, I want to recognize Senator Teletidegui because she was my constant companion in every single hearing on the budget bill, and I was like that when I was a freshman, too. But she could, she was there, and of course, every other member, whenever they had an opportunity, I certainly appreciated their participation and contribution. Senator Espinoza.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, your rules of engagement seem extremely reasonable, and it would provide a process that's fair and expeditious. So at this time, I move that we adopt those recommendations that you've outlined for the body as the rules of engagement and how we're to proceed on Bill Fifty-Eight in the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you very much. On the motion to adopt the rules as previously articulated by the Chair, second show of hands, all in favor? Already? Yes. All right. There's no objections? The rules are adopted. All right. Thank you very much. Senator Calvo, did you want to?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, again, looking at how you've moving forward with, I think now that the discussion now will be the methodology of the revenues. What I am requesting is after the review and the methodology, because the bill, substitute bill, is quite substantive in, in regards to the revenues and the line item, again, I'm requesting if we could allow the, the members that have not revealed the bill to be given, if we can have a recess until maybe about 3:00 so that we can go over the bill. And again, this is just a common courtesy that's been extended in the past, just to allow us for reviewing of this, of the substitute bill.
Yeah. We'll go, we'll go over that, and then after this, we'll see where we're at, and then we'll, then begin that, and we'll, we'll look at that, that, okay? All right. Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. We'll entertain that request as a motion after we, we present the methodology for the adoption of the revenues. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and ask Mr. Chris Bedasi, the Director of the Office of Finance and Budget, to begin the presentation. Mr. Bedasi.
Morning, Senators. Thank you for this opportunity to present the methodology behind the revenue projections. Before I begin, I also would like to reiterate what the chairman had said about the cooperation of the Special Accounting Service and the Special Economic Service. The administration was, was quite an essential part of this process to help understand the different revenue streams, collection streams, the impact of the income tax, and so on and so forth. So before I get too much into the detail, this is in its simplest form what we call the General Fund Prevailing Economic Variable Revenue Forecasting Model, or in other words, the GFPEV. And what we, what we do in, in the first part of it is we come up with a base general fund tax revenue. And for the purposes of the model, the base general fund tax revenue is income tax and gross receipts tax. We looked over the last five years at what percentage of total revenues that that income stream represented, and it varied. It was at a low of 85% to a high of 92%. There's reasons why it got as low as 85%. In general, those two income streams represent about 90% of total general fund revenue. So we consider that to be the base revenues of the general fund. The second line that you see there is the advanced payment of tax revenue. Basically, this is your Section 30 revenue. We don't feel that it's, it would be necessary to do a projection on the federal sources revenue because it's an advanced payment. We asked for it upfront. We know what we're getting going into the fiscal year, so we just plug that part into the model as it is requested by the administration. The last part is the other revenue sources. This is a combination of different income streams. It's the use of money in property, license fees and permits, and department charges. And then the last part of the model is what we call the prevailing economic variables. And these are all things that we foresee in the upcoming fiscal year that are happening kind of outside the base activity of our income stream. So this would be new construction coming in, the era money that's been, going to come into the economy this upcoming fiscal year. And what we do is we go through a process to estimate how much additional income tax revenue we think we're going to receive as a result of these prevailing economic variables. And those can also have negative impact to the income stream, obviously, as tourism, you'll see later on.
The Government of Guam has really spent millions of dollars in the past to develop these prevailing economic variable forecasting models. We hired, I guess, about maybe 10 years ago, a group called Barrance Consulting, and we spent millions of dollars building that model to, so that it can allow us to play what-if games. What if we raised minimum wage by this amount, given your mix of job classifications in the economy? What would happen to the revenues on both the income tax side and the GRT side as you plug in the consumption rates and so forth? I tell you, we spent half the time looking for that model. I know we paid money, we saw the bills for it, and we were not able to find it. So this model that we did here is really fairly basic as compared to these million-dollar models out there. But I, I think that with the work that was done in the past with the Office of Finance and Budget and integrating the general fund projection, in the past, we just took that prevailing model and dumped it on top of the general fund without really looking at the base, base revenue stream of the general fund. This year, we took that and we weighted the base revenue versus the additional revenue that comes out of these prevailing economic variables.
Okay, so the next slide here is a step-by-step on the GFPEV. The first part of the process is to complete the most up-to-date FY09 forecast. So throughout the year, we get together, and a lot of this happens at the Special Accounting Service level. We talk about what's happening with all the collections between DOA and RevTax and BBMR. We look at all the other things happening in the economy that may have a positive or negative effect on that. And at the end of that, we come up with what we believe is going to be the number at the end of the year. And for the purposes of our model, we call it a nine-plus-three forecast. So our, our forecast contains nine months of actuals, and then we estimate the final three months to come up with what's the, the ending revenue number. The second step is to add that FY2009 forecast to a historical data set and then to normalize it. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple slides. Now, after that, we compare the trend, and we finalize what we believe is the base revenue. And, and we have looked at the two-year trend and the three-year trend. We also went back and looked at seven, five years as well. But for the purposes of this model, the two- and the three-year trend are, are pretty essential and is what our base revenue was based on. The, the next point is that we add all the data points that are outside the base tax revenues. And that would be your, your advanced payment of Section 30, your other revenue sources, and then, of course, the prevailing economic variables. And then at the, the final step of the whole process is we apply the provision for tax refunds and the appropriations cap at the very end. So with any model, there's always challenges and, of course, assumptions that need to be made. And here's just a short list of some of the assumptions and some of the challenges that were used in the model that we're using. The first one, of course, is the fiscal multipliers. What are the right ones to use when you're looking at all the new money that's coming into the economy? We, we do what we consider to be an adjusted fiscal multiplier, and it has a little bit to do with the second bullet point there, which, which we would call leakage of dollars as a result of our import-based economy. So we know that because we import most everything here, not all that money stays here, and it doesn't circulate like it would in a, in a larger metropolitan area. And so what we've done is we've used a set of multipliers that was developed by a company called Moody'sEconomy.com, and it was founded by a man named Mark Zandi. And he has been doing a lot of testimony on the Bush stimulus package and also on the Obama stimulus package. He, he went in and developed with their models multipliers that show what they believe the effect of certain types of activity are, whether it be construction, aid to government, food stamps, things like, things of that nature. And so we've, we've adopted that set of, of multipliers. There was four that we used in our model. And then, of course, we adjust it by weighting the amount of dollars that we believe are going to circulate in the economy. For instance, an example of that would be the naval hospital construction project. It's a- It's a $456 million project. So we have to, we have to look at that project, first try to figure out how many millions of dollars are going to happen in this fiscal year and for the subsequent years, because we know all that money's not going to hit the economy in the first year. And then we weight it. We say, okay, we believe this much is going to stay in the economy for labor costs, some of this is going to be local spend, things of that nature. And then once we get that, then we hit it with the multiplier to find out what the effect will be on the economy. The next one is the availability and timeliness and the accuracy of data and I think this is a problem, you know, worldwide, whether it's in the corporate world, government, especially when you're trying to, to collect $600 million in revenue. So there's going to be delays, there's going to be glitches that occur. Probably the biggest challenge that we had was that there, there really isn't a reliable set of Gross Island product data. And that, we know is going to be fixed going forward with a grant that was given by the Office of Economic Adjustment and they're working with the Bureau of Statistics and Plans to try to develop some reliable reports. Once you, once we have some Gross Island product data, we'll be able to validate a lot of the assumptions that have to do with job growth, with what we believe the multiplier effects are and different things. We can, we can also combine that with the import data that Bureau of Statistics has done. And so that's a really key component that we don't have today, but in the years ahead, it will really help us shore up these models.
Yeah, the, the data is, is always, has been a challenge. We've made some progress. This administration, I want to say, has made some progress in the collection of this data and generating some of these economic data. We finally have a chief economist that's been hired for the longest time. The government of Guam did not have a chief economist. We had one economist in Mr. Gary Hiles, who has, you know, been used throughout the different departments and agencies. And of course, he has a long history and experience in terms of, of the local knowledge of, of the, the effects of economic activity on our island economy, but we haven't gathered the data, we haven't collated the data, we haven't put it in a format that's readily available. And we're just beginning to do that. The University of Guam has hired a new professor in economics up there and she's starting to do that. One of the first, one of the things that, you know, when you take a look at what's going to happen in the economy and are we going to get out of this depression or recession or what, is the confidence that the people have in the economy. Everybody measures the economic confidence level, the broad economic confidence level that you have, you know, and so forth. And finally, this year, I think the University of Guam conducted the first confidence, economic confidence data that, that, that we did for our local community. We've had some of the outside economists come in through the, of course, the, the economic reports that have been issued in the past by First Hawaiian Bank, Bank of Hawaii, Bank of Guam is now conducting their own economic reports. In the development of the information that we wanted to have for our own use, we actually sent out a couple hundred letters to the different businesses in our community, asking them to give us some data in terms of what they're looking at for their activity, what their hiring plans are for their next year, what kind of jobs they're bidding on, what kind of jobs they've been awarded. So we had to go out and get that data ourselves, in addition to the data that is being slowly but surely collected by the, the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, Department of Labor and so forth. So we augmented a lot of that. In, in some cases, when we get a response from a business that this is a project that's coming out, we've actually drove down to the site and see the activity there so that we can gauge the flow of the dollars and at which phase of the construction they're in. We're not experts, but we can tell that, you know, they're finished with the foundation and they're going to start with structural work and that's going to require more workers. And we don't have them here, so they got to bring in those from off-island because all the structural workers are working at Anderson. So this kind of, of information, we actually went out, got the data, solicited the input of the business community on Guam and this, we did that over the first half of this year.
The next assumption and challenge that I wanted to talk about was the provision for tax refunds, deficit spending and overdue refunds. Part of what makes trying to estimate the income tax portion of our revenues difficult is the fact that a lot of people have a predisposition already that they're not going to get their refund on time. And so because of that, you see behaviors start to change and, and what happens as a result of that is a lot of non-cash activity. And when you have all that going on, it makes it difficult to kind of estimate where we think the income tax part of this is going to go. If, if a large portion of the taxpayers start to raise their withholding, we, we collect less withholding. If, if they, so that would be an example of why a non-cash transaction is difficult. And then what happens if they're not do a refund, they apply the refunds that were due to them from prior years. And so that made it a little bit difficult to try to really know what the true base was. Again, we're trying to, to work out some parts of the model. This is one of the things we're going to try and improve on is to try to figure out what's the actual non-cash activity that's happening there. And I believe also some of the accounting firms that work with the single audit are working on that as well. The last part I want to talk about is the draft report variance. So every 15th of the following month, a revenue report comes out from the general fund revenues. And that report generally is, has a pretty large variance. And the next slide will show you an example of that and it's a pretty busy slide, so I'm going to kind of step into the slide and, and kind of point out what you're looking at. Excuse me. On the, on the top part, you see the first quarter of this fiscal year, the bottom section is the second quarter. So what you see is the first six months of the general fund monthly comparative revenue statement. In the first column, which would be this column right here, this is the original set of numbers that came out on the 15th of the following month. And then this is the restated number, six months after that. And what we found when we looked at this was the first quarter had an understatement of revenues by $10 million, if you combined it in aggregate. And the second quarter had a combined understatement of revenues by 6.9 million. So that was a total of $16 million of understatement in the comparative revenue, from the initial comparative revenue reports that came out. Now, we know that these things, these glitches happen and, and some of the first quarter activity had to do with some scanning problems at the Department of Revenue and Tax. So, I mean, these are just run-of-the-mill things, so, but I have to commend the administration for getting those reports out on the 15th. At least it gives us some data to work with and then of course, they're, they're always active in updating that data. And so this is one of those challenges that we had, so we had to kind of take that into account when we were looking at the third quarter. So we consider these numbers firm on the, on the first six months of the year, but the, the last quarter, the third quarter revenues are the one that we really had to look at and make an assumption on the understatement.
Yeah, for example, in, in one of these reports, most recently, we saw, one of our colleagues, Senator Cruz, saw this huge glitch in, I think it was, was it withholding or individual? Individual. So we saw this huge, not glitch actually, bump in the individual withholding and we know, we know that number one, we didn't have a huge increase in employment, but it was the classification of the revenue and so next month, they had to come back and restate that. If, if we, you know, when you just look at that data and accept that data, when you're projecting, oh, we're going to have great individual collections for the next few months because that's where we saw the increase and it didn't belong there. It belonged in withholding because of the reimbursement of the ARA Make Work Pay stimulus plan that we're actually getting and being reimbursed by Congress. It was as if we have a new stimulus plan, but it doesn't even pass through the hands of the government anymore. Goes directly to the taxpayers and the tax cuts. But when we got the reimbursement from the feds, they plugged it into individual and, and it just, the data set went out of line. And that's when we say, we have to normalize that data. But before we normalize it, we have to find out where it really belongs. And so those are some of the challenges.
So this next slide is basically our nine-plus-three forecast. So it shows nine months of actuals and three months of forecasts. And what you see up top is the, the normal reporting categories for our general fund revenues. And then what you see kind of below the line is what we would determine to be unanticipated revenues or, or revenues that are coming into the economy that we wouldn't say are part of the baseline revenues. So when we looked at the nine-plus-three forecast, we're, excuse me, we're estimating that the individual income tax category is going to come in at about 75.8 million to end the fiscal year. And that number's derived by taking the additional child tax credit and adding it to the individual tax revenue up top. The individual tax credit was separated, it's a quarterly payment, it's a little bit different than, than the income tax, but it's, it's been happening for the, the last several years and so I, we would consider it part of the baseline revenues, we just treat it differently. But really, it's, it's this number, the 10,171 plus the 65,743 gets you the 75.8 million. So you can see growth in the individual income tax area from fiscal year 2008 of 72.7 to the 75.8. The next line is the corporate tax. So we saw, we're estimating a decrease of about $10 million in the corporate tax. And then withholding. And again, the withholding has kind of a separate item here, which is the Make Work Pay reimbursement withholding. And if you take the 12.4 million and you add it to the 160 million, that gives you about 172 million that we're projecting we'll end the year at for the withholding, which is a slight increase over the, the last fiscal year. And let me explain this, why this number is separated. Part of it is up top and you see part of it down here on the bottom, 3.724 million. So during the revenue hearings back in July, we discovered that as part of the ARA stimulus package, the Department of Revenue and Taxation worked out a memorandum of understanding to be reimbursed on a monthly basis, $2.7 million for lost withholding from the, the $400 tax credit. So when, when we ran out the numbers, it looks to us like the, the true reimbursement due to the government of Guam based on the number of workers here is more in the line of about 22 million and not the number that you see up here. And so what that means is we're basically getting an overpayment of withholding and we would consider that to be outside the normal tax revenue base. And that's why you see 3.7 million down here below the line. When we, we also looked at gross receipts tax, we're, we're showing a slight increase in gross receipts tax at the end of the year. We've got our federal sources, Section 30 revenues, and then the other category. And, and those basically, the Section 30 was a, a decline that was due to the last reconciliation payment, and I'll get into that a little bit later. And then we've also got the, the other category which is showing a slight uptick. Now, the unanticipated revenue and, is what we consider things that aren't currently in the baseline revenues. And the first was the minimum wage increase. So there's two months of the minimum wage increase that went into effect from August and September. So we're anticipating an additional 165,000 material in, in the size of a, a revenue forecast. We talked about the Make Work Pay tax credit. Oh, I'm sorry, I want to come back up to the top, I skipped over this inadvertently. So this $3 million part up top, that is the allowance that we've made for the third quarter under-reporting of, of revenues. So we talked a little bit about how first quarter under-reported by 10 million, second quarter under-reported by 6 million. We wanted to be conservative, we used 3 million, we're not sure where that number's going to land. You know, in the Special Accounting Service meetings, we know that some of the, some of the challenges are being reconciled and fixed and so we assume that that's going to improve as the fiscal year goes by and, and we start to work on fixing those problems. Back to the below-the-line activity, we've got 545,000 we're estimating for ARA-related activity in the economy. Primarily, that was the veterans rebate and the food stamps, the additional food stamp revenue that hit the economy, starting back in April. And then, and it, and it's also a little bit of residual. We didn't count the whole amount, but there's a little bit of residual in there from the $400 tax credit. So people are getting more money in their paycheck, it's a pretty nominal amount, we know that money's going to hit the economy right away. That's the ARA withholding reimbursement. That's, that's realized by the individual taxpayer. This next line is the, the withholding from the deficit bond proceeds from the COLA, that's a real number. So that is the actual number that the Department of Administration withheld from the COLA checks. And then we've got other tax revenues related to deficit bond proceeds. And so that would basically be GRT generated by basically $200 million hitting our economy between the tax refunds and the COLA payments. That's a conservative number. We, we believe maybe, probably about 25% hits the economy and is going to generate us 2.5 million in gross receipts tax for the end of this fiscal year. So that, that takes us to a year-over-year increase in revenues of 20, about $19 million, a 3.26% increase. Add in the provision or the baseline and adjustments for tax refunds, it takes that number down to 511,743, a growth of about 1.7% over prior year of 504.
Chris, before you go on, could we go, I have a question about, you, you said that, that the corporate income tax went down by 10 million as a result of the minimum wage increase, but the minimum wage increase only generated 165,000. Could you explain that?
No, I didn't, I didn't say it was as a result of the minimum wage increase.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I'd heard you say that.
Nope. That, that's just the, the basic general activity, it certainly wouldn't have been as a result of the minimum wage increase.
Chris, can I also follow up, Mr. Speaker, if I may, on the previous graph? On the, okay, on the previous slide, in this particular case, if in fact, the government of Guam had not floated those two bond proceeds, then we, we are looking literally at the $8.8 million, extracting the $8.8 million and the $2.5 million from the unanticipated revenue component.
That's correct.
So realistically, our overall recognizable revenue projection for this fiscal year could conceivably be five, at the range of $500 million, with the exception of the reconciliation for the three. Because I, I recognize that the $3 million is a conservative figure that you just alluded to a little earlier in terms of the allowance from fiscal year 09, third quarter restatement. But then, basically, our entire economy between last fiscal year or this fiscal year, you know, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2008 and 2009 has been stabilized.
It's been flat.
Has been pretty flat. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Ms. Chair, just a real quick, is this all contained within the committee report?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, I'd just like to ask if the committee report could be put online, could I call from a constituent? And also the bill, the substitute bill 58?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the next graph is what we call the baseline revenues. And again, this is only the income tax and the gross receipts tax. So this doesn't include the Section 30 revenue, it doesn't include the other revenue stream. And so what we wanted to do was look at the data set and we went back to 2003 on those revenues and we looked at it year-over-year as what the growth was of that incomes, of those two combined income streams. And so, and this number on the bottom here represents the actual dollar amount in millions above the previous fiscal year. And so, and this is after provision for refunds. So the first thing we see is we had a 12.9% growth rate from the prior year in '03, 8.61, it dropped five, negative 5.7. And then we zoomed up in 2007 by about 14% and then you see we've come back down off of that high. And when we looked at this graph, and of course, the average growth rate over that time is 6.39% over the seven-year period. When we looked at this graph, we said, gosh, this, this looks kind of funny. It doesn't seem like our economy at this point of the game because we know that all of this activity is coming in, there's all the, the military buildup that's happening, you know, what's wrong with this picture? And so this is what, when I talked a little bit earlier about normalizing the data set and you'll see that on the next graph. And the reason that we normalize the data set is back in between mid-year 2003 and then again, in 2004, we raised the gross receipts tax to 6% and then we dropped it back down to 4%. And so the numbers you looked at on the previous screen basically weren't an apples-to-apples comparison. You were collecting more revenues on the GRT side in the one year and then you lost more revenues coming back down when, when the gross receipts tax was dropped again. And so what we did is we basically normalized that revenue set, looking at it as if it was always 4% during that time. And what you see is a modified version or a normalized set of data and you can see that the, the regression line trend actually shows what it should show and that's an average growth or an increasing. growth or an increasing, improving trend. Okay? So here's our baseline tax revenues for the last three years, starting in fiscal year two thousand and seven. These are actuals, two thousand and eight are actuals. And then what you see up top for two thousand and nine is our, what we believe we're going to end the year at. So in fiscal year oh seven, looking at the baseline, we did about four hundred and eighty-six million. Fiscal year two thousand and eight, five hundred and twenty-seven. And then fiscal year oh nine, it looks like we're going to do about five thirty-two, so about a one percent increase. And as was pointed out earlier, we've basically flattened out this fiscal year compared to what was happening prior to that. So looking at the three-year average of the baseline, the baseline looks like it's about five hundred and fifteen million, and the year, the average growth trend during that three-year period is eight percent. Looking at just the last two fiscal years, oh eight, oh nine, you see the baseline revenues at five hundred and thirty million dollars. And so when we looked at this data set, we said, okay, where do we think the baseline is going to be in FY ten? So knowing what we know about all of the era activity that's coming into our economy, the one point one billion dollars that's ready to be appropriated for the military buildup construction, we know that we're building the Ledson landfill, several other big projects, the John F. Kennedy High School. So we've got all these big projects coming into our economy. We believe that the baseline revenue is more along the lines of five hundred and thirty million dollars. So we don't believe that, if, looking at our baseline coming up for fiscal year ten, that it will be any less than that. So here's the graph of what we call, it's basically taking the baseline and adding in the P E V. So this is kind of the fourth step in the process of the model. So if you add up these first four columns on the top line, that equals your five hundred and thirty million dollars or your baseline. Then you add in your section thirty revenues, your other revenues, and you get a total baseline revenue of about five hundred and eighty-four million heading into fiscal year ten, is the estimate. So then we looked at what are the different things happening coming up in the fiscal year that we would consider to be outside the baseline revenues? And the first one was the minimum wage increase. So we know that there's more money in people's pockets. We did make a little bit of an assumption for a reduction in some corporate profits, but we don't believe that it would be a total wash. And so we think there'll be about an eight hundred thousand dollar increase over the next fiscal year from the minimum wage increase. The next thing is what we call the era non-CIP-related activity. And what that is, is part of that is the residual tax income that we're going to get from the extra money in people's pockets from the four hundred dollar tax credit. So we know that people have that extra four hundred dollars in their pocket, and they're going to spend that money in the economy. That's going to generate a piece of that. And then the other piece of that is what we would consider to be additional jobs created by era money through the additional formula grants. It would be for procurement contracts related to those things, but it wouldn't be what we consider to be capital improvement-type projects. So those are all more like service-related or employment-related type activities. So the combination of those two things, we think will generate an additional seven million dollars in the economy. The deficit bond proceeds, we believe about thirty percent of that money will hit the economy in FY ten. So we believe that that will generate an additional ten million dollars in tax receipts for the government of Guam, and that's from the COLA and the refund payments. The next line is the landfill bond. So assuming that the landfill is financed by the Department of USDA, we've got that money available for discretionary spending. And so we went with a more conservative approach, that it would be used for some type of capital improvement project, which has a lower multiplier than if it was used for tax refunds. So the quicker that money gets in the economy, the more money it's going to generate for our revenue stream. Capital improvement projects usually stretch over several years. Getting the money into people's pockets gets the spend out there quicker, and you see more receipts collected as a result of that. So we went with the conservative approach, that it would be used for some type of capital improvement project, and we think that'll generate about four million dollars in revenues. This next one here, the era make-work-pay tax credit. So when you take the two point seven million dollars a year that were being reimbursed by the IRS, you multiply that by twelve, that gives you about thirty-two million dollars we're going to be reimbursed by the IRS for lost withholding as a result of the make-work-pay tax credit. Looking at the numbers of the amount of workers here on Guam, again, we believe that number's around twenty-two million, not thirty-two million. So this actually is money coming into our economy that's not even part of any growth at all. It's just an overpayment of withholding tax, and that's where we're getting an additional ten million dollars. This next part is tourism. What we did with tourism is we assumed that the visitor arrivals would be flat based on the Guam Visitors Bureau semi-annual report, the one that was done on June thirty, that estimates the visitor arrivals, the average tourist spend, and also the tourist attraction fund collections. And so we assumed that visitor arrivals would be flat, but in that same report, they said that the average spend per visitor would be down by about fifty-five dollars. So we used those numbers, we used the visitor arrival statistics, and also the average spend data that was provided by them. And it, we ran the numbers out, and it looks like about a seven million dollar decrease to the economy. Also, when we made those assumptions, we looked at the trend over several years, and back in two thousand and two, that was the worst year of arrivals, I think, in the last decade. And that number came in around, I believe, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Of course, that was coming off the heels of the dot-com bust and then also the nine-eleven tragedy. And so that basically is what we would consider to be the worst-case scenario. So today, it looks like we're going to end the year around a million, maybe a million to a hundred thousand visitors. We think that the worst-case scenario, barring any major disasters, is eight sixty-nine. So we think that a million visitors next year is probably a conservative number, you know. Hopefully, things will improve, but we don't think it's going to go much below that. The last part, and the most complex part of this whole model, is what we call the investment activity. And this is a combination of large construction projects and large procurement contracts that we basically data mined and database through several different sources. There's probably about forty different sources on that. And what we do is we put all that data in there, and we look at it over several fiscal years, starting in fiscal year oh seven, and then we ran that out. Because some of these capital improvement projects are several years in the making, we actually ran the numbers out to FY twelve. So we have, there's projects in the database or in the queue that we believe are going to extend all the way out to fiscal year twelve. And so what we do, and I'll use the naval hospital as an example, it's four hundred and fifty-six million dollar project. We know that the A and E is done on that project, and it is in the queue to be appropriated to have that project actually happen in December.
Yeah. The other thing, of course, is that happens with that is the actions, what does the actions of the government and how it influences that? This body last year dealt with that issue when we dealt with this moratorium that the Guam Water Works Authority put. Even though it was limited to the central part, just the idea that they were limiting projects in that area actually suppressed some investments in the other areas of the island. It delayed the new payless opening because they weren't able to get their permits and they weren't able to get their activity up in the Mangillo area, but that's moving now. Things like, for example, one unknown that could accelerate that side of it, for example, is the H-two cap. There is still existing the H-two cap for bringing H-two workers into Guam, and there are some projects that are waiting for that. If in November, for example, with the federalization of the CNMI immigration, that H-two cap gets lifted, then you'll see an increase and an acceleration of some of these projects into our economy. So one of the concerns that was noted by both the Special Accounting Service and the Special Economic Service Group is, of course, the timing of these revenues, and it is these kind of issues that affect the timing. But we've tried to be conservative in looking at those kind of issues.
And so, going back to the example of naval hospital, four hundred and fifty-six million dollar project, we believe it's going to be broken up over probably the next four fiscal years. Some of the activity is going to hit in this year and then in subsequent years. And so we cut that four hundred and fifty-six million dollar number up, and then we apply our adjustment to it for how much of that money we think is going to stay in the economy for labor costs, for local procurement, things of that nature. And then that is the number that we believe is activity that will generate additional tax revenues. And let me point out that any projects that start in FY ten do not necessarily mean that it's going to bring new tax revenues in. You've got projects coming in, you've got projects ending, so it's a moving target. So what we're looking at is the additional revenues coming into our economy above the baseline. So we have a baseline number that we believe is built in already with these large procurement contracts. So for instance, if the baseline number was four hundred million in fiscal year oh nine, you know, we believe that in this fiscal year, it's going to be seven hundred million. So that's, the delta between the two then becomes the investment dollars that are hitting our economy, that are going to generate the revenues from gross, within the activity on Guam. Another big part of this is era. So this is where you see your era capital improvement projects. And so there's several things that we know are going to happen. The University of Guam is receiving about eighteen million that they're going to start to spend on capital improvement. GCC has a couple of projects going on. We've got the landfill.
The energy grants.
Weatherization grants from Department of Energy. There's also the public health community project down south. So there's several things going on. And one thing that we looked at in the database that is uniquely different this year is the government of Guam has a significant amount of projects in the queue, ready to go as far as capital improvement projects go. And I want to specifically point out the road projects. So the road projects, this year alone, I believe, we've spent year-to-date close to forty or fifty million dollars in road projects. We believe that there's an additional, we got an additional one hundred percent increase in, from era, from the federal highway funds. So we've got thirty-six million dollars for federal highway funds coming in in this fiscal year. In addition to that, fifty million is in the appropriation at the, for the military buildup. And so those projects, the Department of Public Works has done a pretty good job of really running those projects through and getting them in the queue quicker. And so those are, the road projects are the ones that kind of happen a little bit quicker than building of a hospital. And so we believe a bigger spend is going to happen with that thirty-six million dollars this year than we would assume for the naval hospital construction. And so, again, a lot of road construction generates a lot of, a lot of activity, a lot of jobs, and a lot of additional revenue to the government of Guam. So that's, and then, of course, we've got the large Navy procurement contracts, the military procurement contracts, those are factored in. We've seen a little bit of an increase in maintenance-type contracts as the new naval housing facilities have completed and been finished. They're basically bidding out increased amounts in dollars of naval, of maintenance contracts. And so we see those, that types of activity happening as well. In addition to that, we also see commercial construction. So we know that the Unix project is moving forward, and that's a, that's a pretty big investment. We've also got the Outrigger project happening and several other ones. And so when you take all that information and combine it, weigh your spend, add the multipliers, we believe it's going to generate about an additional fifty million dollars into the economy this fiscal year. So that brings us to a total of six hundred and sixty million top-line revenues for the government of Guam in fiscal year ten estimate. Applying provision for tax refunds, one hundred and two million dollars. Believe that the right number for the estimate for this fiscal year is five, basically five hundred and sixty million dollars.
On these construction activities, the military, like you mentioned about the hospital and other, is, are we figuring that we're going to get a four percent GRT from that? And I guess in the past, activities behind the fence weren't being...
Yes, thank you. Let me touch on that subject. The basis of how much money we're going to receive from all of these different types of activities is a number that the Department of Revenue and Tax has developed over the year. And the basic assumption is that for every dollar, for every dollar of new money that comes into our economy, we will collect ten percent of that in tax receipts, whether it be GRT, income tax, corporate income tax. It's basically a combined number that we believe will get, will realize ten percent of that new dollar that comes into the economy.
Senator Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, Chris, to reiterate in a summary, I thought I saw on an earlier page, so you're looking at FY oh nine, five hundred and thirty-two million.
As the baseline.
For FY oh nine?
Correct.
Okay, so...
Now, don't forget, we had to add in the things outside of the base, which was federal sources and other. So really, the number's five eight four.
I'm not talking for the next fiscal year, this coming fiscal, this current fiscal year.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's after the set aside.
Okay.
So the five thirty number is these four numbers, corporate income tax, individual withholding, and gross receipts tax. If you add those four numbers on the top line, that gets your five hundred and thirty million.
Yeah, that's not the money that, that's not the amount we use to adopt revenue, to adopt the budget and to appropriate for operations. That's just the baseline revenue.
Remember, the provision for tax refunds has not been applied to this yet, and that's why you see on the bottom, the number is five hundred and six, five hundred and fifty-eight million. So these are just the top-line revenue collections or the tax receipts that we believe the general fund is going to realize in fiscal year ten. So then, this next slide is exactly the same as the slide you saw before. The only difference is we had to account for what we believe is already built into the base, and that's the Cortec tax credit. So, you know, the existing contract calls for eight point four million to be paid to Cortec for the temporary JFK facility. Part of that was for the collateral equipment, and the other part was for the first year's rent. It was appropriated out of this year's revenues. Because of where we think we're going to end the fiscal year, we don't know if that is going to be used to pay that. So we made what we, again, consider to be a conservative assumption, and we only realized half of that as a, what we call a takedown or a credit to the baseline revenues. So that, it's similar to the tourism scenario, so that's going to have a negative impact on our revenues. And it's, it's going to basically remove the revenues down by four and a half million.
Right. So we're treating that almost as an advance appropriation that we would have to deduct from the general fund revenues available for appropriation in FY ten. So we're deducting it from that. Yes.
And then the other difference is down here is the appropriations cap of ninety-eight percent. So when we use the appropriations cap, that's an additional takedown of about thirteen point one million dollars. So that makes your total general fund tax revenue available for appropriation to be about five hundred and forty million dollars.
Right. And that, we're giving a little bit more conservative because we've increased the set aside for, and the provision for refunds from our normal, from last year's eighty-eight million, so we bumped it up another twenty-one, twenty million dollars, or, I'm sorry, fourteen, yeah, about fourteen, fifteen million dollars. We've increased the provision for refund for that purpose. So, and that reduces the available appropriation capacity for operations. And that's just to be a little bit more conservative because we know we're going, you know, if we come in for that fiscal year with refunds owing after we process of eighty, let's say, or even fifty or whatever, we still know that we don't have enough money, that we will close this fiscal year in terms of the money we owe for past due income tax refunds of somewhere in the neighborhood of one hundred and thirty to one hundred and forty million dollars, that there is no money set aside, you know, because we, even though we set aside the money for this year, it didn't go to paying this year's refunds. It went to going prior year refunds, and even after borrowing that hundred and twelve, we're still going to be short by over one hundred million dollars for sure, and possibly up to one hundred and thirty million dollars.
Chris, can I, can I go back just a little bit? We know that there's, Congressman Abercrombie has an amendment in this year's congressional bill that will basically triple the labor cost on federal construction projects. Now, the USGAO says that's going to add an additional ten billion dollars in basic labor costs. How much revenue would that generate if that, if that passes? How much would that generate for our economy in FY ten and going forward? Have you looked at those estimates?
We haven't completely run those numbers out, but certainly it would be a windfall to the government of Guam. to the government of Guam, starting in fiscal year 10. So that's, the 10 million would be spread out over the course of the buildup in, going into 2012, 2013. It's hard to say because if it passes, we're, we still don't have a firm number on what we think the additional employment is going to be for the island in the upcoming fiscal year. You know, we have, we have some idea, but not all of that would be necessarily related to the military buildup. But, no, we, we didn't run those numbers out, but we do realize that it would be a windfall to the government of Guam. And of course, we have to be conservative in the sense that it's something that may happen, and we didn't certainly factor that into the model.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask, your increase of the reserve for the tax refunds also is a, is a function of the total activity as well, is it not? It's not just simply tied to an increased appropriation? There's going to be additional construction, all of the revenues, the income and corporate, personal and corporate income tax are going to go up as a result of that additional economic activity, and hence there's a substantial increase in the set aside, correct?
Right. But that, that entire number is not driven by just that activity.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's a major component of the...
Yes, that, that will be part of it. It'll be an incremental cost in that.
Thank you.
So this next graph is the graph we saw earlier that showed, again, this is the baseline revenues. This is only your income tax and your gross receipts tax. It doesn't include federal sources and use of money and property. So looking at where we think 2010's going to end up, it's quite, quite a steep, a steep slope. And so, you know, we looked at that and we said, wow, that's, that's pretty intense. And again, this was based on 80% of what we believe is the high revenue potential with all of the things that are happening in the economy. And of course, looking at fiscal year '06 to '07, the, the trend or the slope is very similar. So we, we wanted to kind of do a gut check on those numbers, and by doing that, we looked at the average growth trend from, from seven years, five years, three years, and again, two years. Then we wanted to see what the standard deviation was. So normally, we certainly wouldn't factor standard deviation into our revenue projections, but it would give us an idea. If we're three standard deviations away from the mean, obviously something's not right. So we wanted to just kind of take a look and see where we would end up looking at these numbers. And so you see, standard deviation, run it out, you've got a high in each year of double digits, 10%, up to a high of 14 on the three-year trend. And then you've got the lows, of course, basically in the 1% to 2% range. Certainly, this is not a factor. So we believe that the, you know, the estimate for revenues is somewhere in that area, basically between probably 6%. So if you look at the three-year trend of 8% and the two-year trend of 4%, you take that and look at those averages, you know, we think, depending on how things fall out, if we spend that ERA money quickly, if the military buildup ramps up, we think that there's a range between 6% growth and 14% growth. Go to the next slide. This just kind of gives you a graphical representation of that. So if you're looking at the mean or the average over that time, you've got your standard deviations over each year, and then we've dotted the line through there so you can kind of see from a graphical standpoint, is this doable? Can this be done? And, you know, we, we think that this Guam story is good, and I think that was part of what happened with the deficit bond sale happening so quickly and actually not, are being oversold. So, you know, we think that this is a doable number if, if everything falls into place. Next slide. So next, I want to talk a little, a little bit about the Special Accounting Service. So the Special Accounting Service met, I believe, six or eight times between March and August. During those meetings, a lot of it was discovery and looking at the income streams and getting, trying to basically come up with better data sets. As the chairman mentioned earlier, the voting group is up there, you can see them. The unanimous recommendation from the group was the five, adoption of a 560 million dollar revenue number. The Bureau Budget had come out with a number of 570 million dollars, and they represented that at the Special Accounting Service meeting. Again, you know, after talking it through at that level, we talked it, and, and it came out to a unanimous 560 million dollar estimate. Couple of concerns were brought up. The first was the timing of this revenue and when it's going to hit the income stream. And of course, that's something that needs to be taken into account. We may not realize all that money upfront. We may see a lot of it come in later. The other was the COLA certificates. So at the time when we had our meeting that adopted the revenues, it wasn't clear yet whether or not the COLA certificates would be allowed to pay down other types of government of Guam payables, such as gross receipts and things of that nature. Since then, we found out that it cannot be used for that purpose, so it really represents no risk to reduce collections to the government. The Special Economic Service, same thing, recommendations and concerns. The voting group, you can see them up there. Again, it was the unanimous recommendation at the 560 million dollar level, and again, the timing of the collections was brought up as a concern. So what we're looking at from the general fund side of the revenues, and of course, this was, this is pages two through six of the Bill 58, is total general fund revenue collection is 655 million with the provision for tax refund payments at 102 million, the appropriations cap of 13.3 million brings us to total general fund revenue available for appropriation at 540 million dollars. And again, our year-over-year expenditure growth in this budget bill is 3.74%, which we believe is an extremely conservative number. So, you know, the approach we took with the GFPEV model was, let's look at this day, and let's, let's really put our time into analyzing all this new money coming into the economy and see where we think it's going to land. And then from the, from the standpoint of the provision for refunds, and also for the 2% set aside, we believe that we've built in conservatism where it's not going, if, if certain things don't materialize, we're not going to realize a, a broken budget. And so that was part of the, the reason for doing, making sure we had these things built into it. And so, again, year-over-year expenditure growth at 3.74 million. So that would mean we'd need to collect an additional 30 million dollars in revenue in the next fiscal year if we end up around 511 as we projected earlier in our nine-plus-three forecast. So that, that's it. On the general fund revenue side, there's also...
Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a note, I mean, I, I see that, again, the, if you can go back once, there you go. The total general fund revenue available for appropriation is different from what's being presented to us on the thing. I mean, can you just, I just, I just need to understand that a little bit better.
I think it's because we took out the Cortec. If you look at that number, are you looking at, what's that number there, 545?
545, yeah.
Yeah, we took out, once again, we took out that Cortec tax credit and treated it as an, as, as a charge against next year's revenue already.
Okay.
And so we would not appropriate that number. So we reduce that number by that tax, Cortec's tax credit, which further reduces the appropriation.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe the 540 number is on page six.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken. Page three, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's just, of course, the, the main part of our revenue stream for, that helps finance and operate the government of Guam. We've also got what we call special fund revenue collections. And this, it's comprised of about 30 different funds of, that we have in the bill. There's probably about 90 different special funds, most inactive at this time. The approach to the special funds is, is we work with the Bureau Budget and their models for these things. These, these funds are pretty predictable in their income streams. It's driver's license registration, property tax, environmental health fund is, I believe, permits. So each one of these funds is some type of income stream to the government of Guam. And these are the estimates based on the average growth. And I want to touch a little bit on the average growth as well. So, you know...
Just, just real quickly, one of the big difference in this year is H. Last year, in the budget bill, we estimated 1.4, I believe, million dollars under what we called the flame fund. So we appropriated 1.4 million to be spent for the flame fund last year. And we just looked at the collections this year, looked at the activity there and said, no, we can't do that. It's just, it's phantom. So based upon actual collections, we've reduced that to about $100,000 from the 1.3 million or 1.4 million dollar last year. That's going to pick up a little because they're starting to put in, they're billing for ambulances, and they're doing inspections. They're actually going out to different businesses and asking for special inspections so that they can get their occupancy permit quicker and things like that. So there'll be activity there, and we believe that that will be about $100,000 next year. But it certainly is a long way from the 1.4 that was accepted as revenue last year and appropriated for expenditure.
Okay. And before I get into the average growth point I was going to make, I also want to touch on K, which is the Guam Highway Fund. So the Guam Highway Fund actually is a source of funds for two other special funds. And so in order to make sure that we're not increasing revenues, we need to take the Guam Highway Fund down. If we're going to realize the fund in the top line, we need to take it down by the amounts going into that fund. And if you look in the first few pages of the revenues, you'll see there's also a takedown of about 583,000 in the general fund side because the, the Better Public Service Fund comes from two different sources. And the combined, those combined numbers equal the 1.5 million. So if you take this number and then the number on, I believe it's under use in property, or, no, I'm sorry, license fees and permits, if you take those two numbers and add them together, it gives you 1.5. The Public Transit Fund is its own fund, and you'll see that a couple of slides from now where this is a realized revenue in that fund. So again, what I mentioned earlier is we use the, the BBMR methodology of, and of the average collection streams. Again, these are more predictable type things. And generally, the average growth model is a good model to have. And of course, we looked at that intensely on the general fund side, but we just knew that there's too much additional activity going on, going into fiscal year 10 with ERA and with the military buildup and all the other things happening, that that's why we relied heavily on the prevailing economic variable portion or using this model as opposed to looking at an average growth model on the general fund side. Go to the next slide. Here's some more additional slides here. You look at letter O, Manpower Development Fund. So this fund is tracking to end the year around 1.9, 1.8, 1.9 million dollars. So you see a, a pretty steep increase, so almost a double on that fund to 3.5 million dollars. Those numbers are based on projections from the Department of Labor. So Bureau Budget met with the Department of Labor. They're estimating that that fund is going to realize 3.5 million dollars. We talked about it extensively at the SAS level, and we were all, excuse me, very comfortable that that was going to happen with a lot of the activity that's, that they're seeing already at the Department of Labor. Several other of these funds, the Healthy Futures Fund is showing a, a nice trend. Unfortunately, from prior years, it's, it looks like it's going to increase a little more this upcoming year. Land Survey Revolving Fund has been pretty steady. This part here is the federal sources, federal grant that goes into the School Lunch Fund. We also are realizing the cash collections at the Department of Education as well for appropriation. Go to the next slide. And then really, you've got your, your two big special funds here. You've got the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, which is mostly, it's your real estate tax, and then the Tourist Attraction Fund, which is your, your tax on the hotels.
Chris, Chris, can I just ask a, a quick question, Mr. Speaker, if I may? Going back to the school lunch program?
Sure.
I know you highlighted in the previous slide, $700,000 is going to be generated from actual collections. Now, I was on the impression they were going to adjust their, their actual fees for lunch. Does that incorporate any adjustment?
It is not. We...
For this school year, this, yeah, this upcoming school year, I understand they're looking at adjusting it upward.
Yeah. It assumes that the cost of lunch to the schoolchildren will remain the same.
Yeah, we did not factor any of that in.
Yes. Senator Guthrie.
Going back to the Manpower Development Fund, so you're projecting about 1.5 million?
3.5 million.
3.5 million. And how much of that is going to go to GCC?
GCC realizes 70% of that.
2.4 million.
So GCC should be able to increase its vocational training programs as a result of this. And personally, I'm predicting even a higher amount. So you're being conservative, right, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, we are.
You're being very conservative.
Actually, you know, we relied, that's about 3,500 alien labor.
Right.
There's about, almost 2,000 now. Then we've seen some petitions coming in.
Right.
You know, and that, it's an annual renewal. So it's not just new people coming in, but existing ones, if they're going to stay, get a, get an annual renewal, and it's the same amount. And thanks to you, that fund has increased from 700,000, I believe, to about 3.5.
Right. And I, I, I make this point because I, I hope the contractors that are out there are paying attention to this. Because if everything works out, they will be able to recruit locally in the near future for quite a number of new positions.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Adak.
So, so then we're anticipating only an additional 1,500 new H2 laborers coming through?
That's correct.
For 2010?
That's correct. So that's conservative, we think.
Okay. Like I mentioned earlier, you see the Public Transit Fund is realized here. So it was a takedown from the Guam Highway Fund, and it's realized as its own fund here. We've also included the passport fees that are collected, the tax, which is 50% goes to the Tax Collection Enforcement Fund, 50% goes to the Public School Library Resources Fund. And lastly, the Guam Board of Accountancy is a new one that was not in the previous budget as well. And that is the expected collections for the upcoming year, and that's used just to fund that operation. So total special fund collection, we believe, is about 112 million and a half for fiscal year 10. And that's, that's the presentation. Thank you.
And that concludes the presentation on the elements and the discussions that went into the arrival at the projections that are included in the budget bill. Again, this is even less than the projection that was restated by the Bureau of Budget and Management. The Bureau of Budget and Management, in its submission of the annual budget requests by the governor, and it's required in January of this year, I think, assumed a general fund revenue of about 532, was it somewhere around, in January. They, based upon their additional activity that, and information that they've been able to gather between then and now, they've actually restated their revenue projection to be about 570 million dollars. We have, and that would be the amount available for appropriation prior to the 2% set aside. We have even further reduced that to 560 and, and received a concurrence of the Special Accounting Service and Special Economic Service to even further reduce that. And then again, when you take away and you reduce it by the 2% set aside requirements, it gives us a appropriation level available of 545. But then we've even gone on and further reduced that to account for the Cortec, or at least one-half of the Cortec tax credit to be taken in FY10. And so it gives us a operational revenue base for appropriation of about 540 million dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Respeche.
Thank you. Going back to the special revenue fund category?
Yes.
There's one, and we talked about this earlier, there's one special fund that we're trying to capture.
That's right.
That's the Recycling Revolving Fund.
Yeah.
It's established by law, and it's evolved from the Abandoned Vehicle Fund, and then the Streetlight Fund was separated out with the Abandoned Vehicle Fund, and it went, went over to DPW, and then now it's with EPA. Would you be able to quantify how much that fund is? I looked at the enabling, the statute, and it's a continuing appropriation.
That's correct. We've been able to establish that the fund generates money because an FTE is being charged against the fund.
Yeah, through EPA.
Yeah, through EPA, but we haven't been able to establish the collection levels at that, and we're still working on that. But we are, we are working on it.
And the money generated, we all know, comes from the vehicle license.
That's correct.
Registration.
Yes, and we're going to start working with the SAS and the Bureau Budget to try to capture those revenues so we can include them as well.
But for this budget, I'm preparing a floor amendment because the, when we amended the budget to put under EPA, and it says that EPA shall administer this act, the appropriation still seems to go to DPW.
Yeah.
And in 2009, EPA is instructed to pay all these outstanding vendor payables. So if you, at some point in this process, I prepare the floor amendment and present it to you for consideration.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Respeche. Okay. Any other discussion on the presentation? Any other questions? It's 11:30. Did we want to continue with... Do we want to continue with Senator Calvo?
Again, Mr. Chair, again, thank you. Very good presentation there by Chris. Thank you very much, Chris. Again, it's a lot of information to absorb. So again, I'd like to make that, the motion, that maybe we can, if we can recess, maybe till 3 o'clock, so that we can review this documentation. And I think you'd also mentioned earlier that with the report, with the report that has been given just this morning, it is contained within the committee report, correct?
That's correct. And that's, I, my, still being copied. All right. It's almost done. So I would entertain then a motion to recess until 3.
And then when we commence, Mr. Chairman, will we be able to begin with general comments regarding your?
Yes.
I want an opportunity to commend you and your office. I want to start off the budget by doing that.
Okay. So we will, there's a motion to recess until 3. No objection on that motion? All right? The committee as a whole will recess then until 3 PM, at which time we'll return. Sidus Massey.
The matter of Bill Number 58 is back in session. Bill 58 is the Act to Make Appropriations for the Operation of the Executive Legislative and Judicial Branches of the Governor of Guam for fiscal year ending September 30, 2010, and making other appropriations and establishing miscellaneous and administrative provisions for the operation of the annual budget. At this time, we have finished with the presentation, and we are ready to begin the discussion of the bill. As indicated earlier, we'll allow each member of the body who wishes to make some general comments regarding the budget itself, of course, and any other matter relating to the budget and Bill 58. We'd like to offer the opportunity for members of the body to begin some discussion. So at this time, does anybody and any member of the body wish to make some general comments? If not, we'll go ahead and begin with the discussion. Senator Calvo?
Not real comments, but...
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I'm wondering, again, we are moving into the revenue side of the budget, and there is, I understand too, with SES and SAS, there has been an agreement, or pretty much close to an agreement on some of the numbers and revenues. I'm one, I would like to make a request, if we could have maybe members of the administration, at least the fiscal policy team, present?
We did send the notice, of course, that we are convening.
Yeah.
This budget hearing. I think Ms. Bertha Duñez, who usually heads the fiscal policy team for the governor, is off-line still. I know we had sent a notice to her office requesting her presence. For the record, once again, I don't know if we included the minutes of the last meeting in the committee report of the Special Economic Service Group, but that was a meeting that was held in the Office of Finance and Budget last week. And at that time, we presented the revenue projection of 560 million dollars. Discussion ensued at that meeting, and then at the end of the meeting, we put a motion on the floor for a vote on each member's acceptance of the projected revenue. By the way, the revenue projection was arrived at, of course, through the process outlined to you this morning, and the committee, Special Economic Service Committee is privy to that presentation, and actually was instrumental in the development of that presentation and the refining of that presentation. So we do have the minutes of those meetings. I don't know that we wrote them up and included them in the committee report, but it was a formal convening of the meeting, at which time they unanimously voted to accept the revenue projection of 560 million dollars.
Yeah, well, I would like to move to request if we could have, if not Bertha, a representative from the fiscal policy team. In the past, folks such as maybe Rev. Tax, Artie Logan, Lou Perez, and an economist such as, I saw Gary Hiles earlier today.
Yeah, Gary Hiles, I was going to mention that, Senator. Yes, Mr. Hiles is outside in the public hearing room, and he's available also. He's a member of the SES, so, I mean, we could invite him in if you wish.
Yeah. And again, that's the motion I'd like to make, Mr. Chair. If we could get members of the, representatives from the fiscal policy team to, so we can reconcile again some of the numbers.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, we did invite, once again, we'll make another call, but at this time, we'll go ahead and invite Mr. Gary Hiles, who is a member of the, a voting member of the Special Economic Service Group, to please join us. Joe, would you request Mr. Hiles? He's right outside. And then we'll reach the other members and have them be available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and make a, entertain a motion to adopt Section 1 of, all right? There's a motion to adopt Section 1, which sets out the revenues of the bill title, basically, the general provisions, and so it, the short title, that's right, yeah. No, short title of the bill. So there's no objection to Section 1? Section 1's adopted. Section 2 outlines, of course, the revenue projections and sets aside the amounts for each of those revenue projections and the sources of those revenue projections, and the sources of the revenues that will be adopted. So it starts with the estimated revenue for fiscal year 2010, and we start with the general revenue. The general revenue adopted by the SES and proposed in this bill is the total revenue prior to the set aside of the income tax refund and reserve, and of course, the reserve requirement by public law that was enacted and is now codified as subsection 22436, Chapter 22 of 5 GCA. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, usually when we go through this process, you will go line by line, section by section, and adoption of each one of these areas. We're now going into the revenues themselves and the section that you just talked about. Generally, before we adopt the revenues, we talk about each one of those items under income tax, corporate and individual, and we go through the entire process of asking questions before we adopt them. So we're going to be doing that same process, correct?
No, there'll be, there's a motion to adopt the revenue, and then as part of the motion to adopt, there'll be the discussion.
Okay, and at the end of that section, then, we adopt the entire revenues?
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. So there's a motion to adopt Section 2, setting aside, I mean, outlining the revenues and for the upcoming fiscal year, and the discussion of the, those revenues. Senator Calvo?
Yeah. Again, again, this is basically the aggregate amount of 660 million, 46230. I guess the question I would pose, Mr. Chair, and whether it's to you or to Chris, earlier on in the presentation by Office of Finance and Budget, they started out with a base revenue for FY, and that's really where it starts, on the base revenue. And going back to FY09, the 530 million figure, or 532. I'm looking in the committee report, and I see, and I just want to get clarification, on the committee report, there is a document that says general tax revenue base, and it shows the FY 2007, and it shows 486 million, 146, 125, and then it gives a percentage, and then it has FY 2008, the actual, for 527, 863, 490, and it gives a percentage. And then it gets the FY 2009 estimate at 532 million, 912, 887. And it gives estimate, I figure, because the fiscal year hasn't ended yet. And then there are the averages for 2007 to 2009, showing 515 million, 640, 834. And then in the final column, the average FY 2008 to FY 2009 figure, which is at 530, 388, 189.
Yep.
And so I, is that 530, 388, 189? Is that the base figure that was the determinant?
Yes.
And if you could assist me?
And again, the base figure is...
Before the PEVs and...
That's correct.
Exactly.
It consists of the GRT and the income taxes.
Yeah, and that's why I'm just trying to get an understanding. When you have the base, the base figure at 530, and I recall there were, I mentioned earlier, three years, and I guess that's '07, '08, '09, correct? And then I think there's a calculation on the average to get the base. And I don't know if that's three or two. So if you can just clarify that for me?
There's a 9 plus 3 and a 9 plus 2. 9 being 9 months of actual revenue for this fiscal year, plus the 3 months that is projected to come to the projected revenue for fiscal year 2009. Yeah.
And then?
And then you take the actuals of 2007, 2008, and then the 9 plus 3 projection for 2009. That'll give you an average for the 3. And then we've also gone through just an average of the last 2.
Okay.
So those are the 2 figures, and those 2 columns at the end there.
Okay. The, the first question I have then is that on, looking at the numbers for FY 2007 and 2008, there is the num, there is the, the numbers given, and of course, those averages are very important, because those are what are the basis for the, for the base revenue. The, I'm just wondering, the actual numbers that are used there for '07 and '08, what was a source document for that, for those numbers?
Pete, go ahead.
The source information for that is the financial management system, the division of accounts. So it's basically the revenue accounts. How's those tax receipts?
Okay. Did you use the revenue statement? The actual revenue statements from the audits?
We did not. We used the tax receipt that are booked as revenues in those income streams, within the financial management system of the government of Guam.
Did you review what the actual revenues were audited for those fiscal years, '07 and '08?
We did look at those numbers, but again, we're looking in the actual receipts that are collected within the revenue accounts. So sometimes there's, sometimes there's adjustments that are made, and so those numbers may not truly reflect. So for instance, the one-time events, reimbursements for things, things of that nature.
The, do you have, do you have the actual numbers in front of you?
Yes, the 515 and the 513?
Yeah, 513 and 514, well, 515, yes.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, see, my concern is that, looking at the numbers that you're using for the averages, the actual revenues for those fiscal years are dissimilar to what are the basis for this average calculation. The FY 2007, actual revenues were 513 million, 190, and the FY 2008 were 514, 514 million, 772.
Yes, Senator Calvo?
Yeah, and that's why I, maybe I, let me get an understanding then, how you calculate, because, again, Mr. Chair, this is obviously revenue forecasting is, each one has a different, there's a different methodology. And I'm not saying which one is right or wrong, but, you know, again, in the past, there has been the use of the actual revenues coming in, in the aggregate amounts, which were, again, the actual numbers.
Wait.
And that, what I see here, and I'm trying to figure if you're only using just, I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not, I'm trying to, you're not using the actual numbers, then you're using something else.
We're using tax collections.
Right.
So these are revenues collected in those fiscal years for those revenue accounts within the financial management system.
Right. So are those numbers you were quoting, Senator, were those the audit numbers?
Yeah, audit.
Okay.
See, and my concern, and again, I'm not saying what is right or wrong.
No, 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 I understand.
But our methodology in the past, you do use the actual revenues, but then you also have the monthly, income statements that come in, and then, of course, you base it on certain years, whether it's 2-year, 5-year, 7-year. So that's why I'm just trying to get an understanding, if, if, in the, coming up with the calculations, that you did not use the portion dealing with the actual audited statements, but more on the actual, like you say, revenues collected?
That's, that's correct. And deposited into those revenue accounts. So we actually used the dollar bills that came in. In an audit statement, Senators, I know you're very much aware, there are some transactions that are non-cash transactions that are used to restate revenues, et cetera. And those kind of adjustments, accounting adjustments are made in these audit statements. What we did was, we looked at the money that came into the government, the deposits that were made into those accounts. And, you know, there's, they're the real, the hard dollars. And I understand certainly the adjustments that may be made when they're, and between the 2 numbers, there's about a 5, 10 million difference.
Yeah.
So on an average, that would be, you know, over a 2-year period, 3 million if it's 10, and over a 2-year period, 5 million if it's, if it's, if it's 2. So that would be what you would, may want to call your error margin. That amount would be over the average of those 2 or 3 years.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple other questions. On the 530, then what you're doing then is you're using, the basis for the 530 is, is the FY08, and rather than the actual, using the figures from the statement, but the actual collections for FY08, and then the average with that, with the FY 2009, the first 9 months actual plus 3?
That's correct.
And that, and that is the basis for coming up with the base for the FY10, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And you believe that that's a sound, sound methodology?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, one last question. The tracking, and this is where maybe I can get a better understanding, I wish Bertha were here, on the June, as of the end of the June, we are tracking at 511 million for the, for the fiscal year. And there are certain, looking at that, at the June, well, the July statement, but ending June 28th, the tracking is at 511. Now, there have been revenue adjustments. One of them has been on individual for the additional child tax credit at 10 million, 224, 379. And then another adjustment for one-time withholding tax collection for cola bond proceeds for 8.9 million. And I don't know, I was going to ask this to Bertha and to Art, but since they're not here, maybe if they come in a little later?
Yes.
They can ask, but if I can, if maybe you know, Chris, or Mr. Chair, on the 10 million, 224, and I think this is, with Bertha, we just need to get an understanding, on the Department of Administration statements, usually the, a tax credit is already within the, the, the revenue figure, and then it's usually been back-ended out. And I just want to make sure they didn't double, they, there wasn't a double counting of that. I don't know if you, if you've reconciled that, or if not, maybe we can wait for Bertha?
Which tax credit?
On the child tax credit?
Oh, yes. No, that was verified, so.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so that's not...
Yeah, the child tax credit, just a small history, that's the re, that's the reimbursable portion of the child tax credit.
Yeah.
In the, before... In the, before, the federal government would allow the tax credit, of course, but the reimbursable portion was paid out of our local collections of the taxes. The, um, and, and I think it was in 19, or, no, maybe it was in like 2000 and, what's it, 2009? I think it was 1998 or nineteen, or 2000. I actually went to Washington, and during that trip, I met with the IRS people, and I, of course, I met with Congressman Underwood. And we pleaded to the IRS to reimburse Guam for the actual payout of the additional tax, child tax credit. Before, when we paid it out, we had to use our own local collections, but, and up to the reimbursable amount. Then, on the cash payment beyond the reimbursable amount, so the actual cash payment, the federal government decided, and, and based upon, and we entered into an MOU, that they would give us the cash for any tax credit we paid out above the reimbursable amount for the credit. And that's what that number is. It's grown. It's, it, when it started, I think the reimbursable amount of that additional child tax credit that we were paying out and not getting cash in return was about $6 million. So we started getting that receipt. So it's built up over the years, so now we're getting about a $10 million. It's like the make-work-pay. They actually are giving us the cash for the money that we pay, we pay out. So that's a cash reimbursement to the government of Guam.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, on that one, I just want to make sure that there was not a double count.
Yeah.
Because in the past, it has been already in the, uh, in the revenue. So that one, we can get verification from probably Bertha or Lou.
Yeah.
The last one, just on the withholding, the withholding interest and penalties, $8.9 million for the, the COLA bond proceeds.
Mm-hmm.
That, that is, um, okay, so that, that has already been calculated, and that has already been taken out?
That's correct.
And has been already, um, collected, or?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
So we have an adjusted amount from 491 to 511, uh, is the tracking. And I guess that's where I get a little bit concerned, too. Uh, and I wish they're, they were there, but because what my concern now is, you're looking at, at, at earlier statements made, we have a budget that has had a ratified revenue number of 520.
That's correct.
We are tracking at 511, and there are certain, um, there used to be the old word anomaly, remember?
Yes.
Bertha's word for anomaly.
Yes, the anomalies.
But there are anomalies, that if those anomalies were not present, and one of them is recurring and one is not, but it would be at about 492 million. And that is where I'm a little bit of a concern, actually, a concern on, on how we, we are now moving forward on a 530.
Yes.
Uh, anticipated for FY 2009. And maybe that's why there can be further clarification. And that'll, that'll end up my round of questioning at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just the, uh, just a short response on that is, when, when we made the presentation, we, we talked about normalizing the data sets, and it would, that would be something that we would end up normalizing that data set, but you're certainly right. Chris?
Yes. So if you look at the baseline revenues, the 532, that is all the above-the-line revenue. So I, none of the, what you see below the line is counted in that number. So if you take the 345, 400, add it to the 187, 512, that carries you over to the 532 on the baseline revenues for FY '09 projected.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I appreciate the response, but I just?
Senator Cabal, I just, I'm sorry, Senator. I just wanted to know, to see if he was finished.
And then that, I guess that's what the question I want to ask.
Okay.
And again, that's something for, for, obviously, you feel comfortable that I need to get an, uh, and again, when, when Ms. Duñez comes in here?
Yes.
We would like to, to ask questions on this matter as well, because again, based on, on the original revenue estimate put forward by the governor, and based on what our tracking is, and I, I do have some concern, and I do, I must note formally, I do have some concerns on, on, on non-use of the actual revenues. Um, and that's why I think it's important that we, that maybe we get some clarification from the administration as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Tenorio?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, again, I thank you for the response, for the regards to the 511, 532. If you go, I understand the 511 was based on the projections in June on, based on the tracking data that you had, nine plus three, with the nine being the existing revenue set, and then the three being what you anticipate based on those previous nine months of accumulated data. So if you were projecting at 511 as of June, then how do you get to the 532 estimated in, by the end of the fiscal year?
Your, your 511 number is net of your provision for refunds. So what we didn't want to do is take an accounting number and try to factor that in as a trended number, or a baseline revenue number. So we kind of took the provision out of that factor, and we went with the actual collections first, and trended those, and that's where you get your baseline. So when you net out the provision on the bottom, that's where it takes the projection down to 511.
So the 511 million is after you take out all of the provisions for tax refunds?
Correct. So in the?
I thought the, the whole idea of 511 was actual, actual monies to receive to the end of the fiscal year, based on the nine months of actual collections and three-month additional, notwithstanding the actual monies that had to be paid out.
But, but the way that it's, it's presented and reported on is, is, that's, that's how it's reported on by the administration. So when they do their monthly comparative, it's always included with the provision.
So, so then the administration is in agreement that we're gonna get $532 million, including all provisions for tax returns, or tax refunds?
I believe you'd have to, to ask them that question, but, you know, we don't always pay out that provision, and I think that's part of the, the disconnect that happens. So, so we may only pay out 50 million of that, not 88 million. And so that's why we removed it from the, from trying to trend it, because that's not a, it's not a real number. We, by the end of this year, we will probably not, without the tax refund bond proceeds, if we didn't have that, we more than likely would not have paid out the 88, six. I mean, if you, if you go back and look at the inception of the provision for tax refunds, we've only hit that number and paid that back to taxpayers at one time throughout the last six years, and the only reason that we did that was because 18 million of it came from bond proceeds. So that's kind of a, it's kind of almost like a revolving line of credit, the way it's used.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I just want to echo the sentiments of Senator Cabal with regards to bringing the administration officials here, so we can really have the same discussion we've had every time we're here in the budget process, is to ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to call every one of them from DOA, RevTax, BBMR, and maybe Roseanne Jones, you know, to try to really reconcile these numbers, so we can really have a collective discussion, because we weren't, you know, party to those same meetings he was asking about.
Okay. Senator Specher?
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm very encouraged by your presentation and, and how you opened this budget hearing. Particularly, I'm, I'm very encouraged and pleased that your committee and your Office of Finance and Budget followed the statutory requirement in putting the budget together by following the, uh, the, um, to the T, I guess, the Special Accounting Services and the Special Economic Services Group. The previous speaker said that we needed to bring all these people in, because that's how we've been doing the budget. I think we recognize, here as a legislature, at least majority of us, that because we do the budget that way, that's why we have all these problems in trying to adopt the revenue projection. Uh, as you know, and I want to thank you so much, as you know, the statutory requirement of, by the SAS and the SES and the OFB is to have entrenched bureaucrats, the technocrats, follow these economic patterns and trends and, and, and adopt the revenue projection even before this number is presented to the body. Uh, one of the problems I had in this budget process, I've been a member, not as long as you have, but I've been a member for seven years now, and one of the problems I have is that we see that, first, the expenditure requirement of the government is quantified, and then out of the blue, we have a revenue projection that almost magically matches those expenditure, uh, operational requirement of the government. And in this process that you followed, you had the SAS and the SES and OFB and yourself adopt these revenue projections. So the, the call to have Bertha Duñez here, Roseanna Jones, and all those officials, I believe was already done through your committee process. And I, I don't think it's necessary to bring them in, and I object to the, to the recommendation to do so.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I would say that we've kind of like double-crossed those Ts and double-dotted the Is, because we really, I, I just want to assure the body that we did, we, we have informed the administration that we are beginning this and that. Uh, we've asked them to make themselves available for any questions that we may have. Uh, but I do want to say, again, that, you know, I think we had six or seven meetings of the SAS, so it wasn't a one-time shot, and we reexamined these numbers, and that's one of the reasons why we've actually gone from, you know, 570 and adopted a lower number, and we did the same with the SES, so. Uh, but we did, I do want to assure all the other members of the body that, that I did invite and, and informed the administration officials, that this body's convening its budget hearing, uh, as required, uh, and as called by the speaker, and that I requested for them to be here. So we'll continue to work with them, to get them here, and make themselves available to any member of this body that has any questions. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, it seems unfathomable to be understand why a, and a member of this body would object to having administration officials come to the panel and ask questions. You yourself are one of the, the primary persons who ask questions of every single administration official who comes here every time we do a, a budget process, and you critique these numbers as closely as anyone in here. And, and for any member of this body to object in having a member of the representative of the administration for the Department of Revenue Taxation, Department of Administration, or BBMR to come here to validate the numbers, which you worked cohesively with those members to, to represent to all the people of Guam, is unconscionable to me. I can't understand why it would be objectionable to have one of these people who have traditionally been here to answer to every one of the 15 members of this body. So I, I don't understand that, and, and if it's, if the objection is that these people are not going to come here because a member of this body objected to them coming here, then I suggest you put it to a vote. But I suggest, frankly, sir, that we, we go as we have always done, and analyze these numbers as empirically as we possibly can, with, with an objective and a statesman-like fashion.
I, I understand that, Senator, and, and I just want to say that this body voted on the process of adopting these revenues. So in that respect, either we liked our vote there, or we didn't like our vote there, but we voted that, this body voted to put in a process that would validate this revenue projection, get it accepted and presented to this body, um, you know, and it was to kind of take out some of the, the?
It doesn't take out?
I know it doesn't, but we said by law that we will accept this, so, uh, and again, I do want to say that, you know, we, we are prepared to do that. We've invited them, we'll ask them to make themselves available for members of this body to ask any questions, so. Senator Ector?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I too would like to commend you and, and the committee in, for doing such a fantastic job. People don't realize how difficult it is to put together an office, rebuild the models, rebuild the, the formulas, and put together a team and come up with such a phenomenal budget in such a short period of time. Uh, but I do have a question for you. Weren't these SAS and SES meetings open to all members of this body?
Um, the SAS meetings, and the SES meetings, we announced, yes, we did. And the, um, the SAS meetings were, the members were set, and we announced those meetings as well.
That's what I thought. So any member of this body, if they had questions on how these projections came about, could have attended these meetings and asked those questions then, correct?
I, I would say they, they could have, but again, I, I understand, uh, the point, but we will, once again, continue to work with every member of this body to provide them that opportunity. But your point, point is well taken.
I just wanted to point this out. So the? Don't I have the floor, sir?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. I mean, I just wanted to point it out. If, if people were, were interested in questioning these numbers, I, I, they had the opportunity that you afforded them at the time. Um, and, and with that, I, I just want to say once again, congratulations on doing such an incredible job in such a short period of time. Thank you.
Senator Boies?
So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I do want to chime in and extend my kudos to you and your committee for doing a very fine job. The presentation was excellent this morning, and, and as noted for the record, you did extend that invitation to the administration. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And I did note that the Economist was here this morning. I don't know if he's still here, but I think he was here since early this morning. Um, and, um, based on the presentation that was provided, I think, and the recommendation, and maybe just for the record to our listening audience out there, that there was a vote taken when the transitions were going on at all the different meetings, the eight, seven, six to eight meetings, if I'm not mistaken, uh, that there was a vote on the measure in as far as the revenues and the adoption to, to, to what was presented before us. Am I correct?
Yes, and, you know, the, the vote, of course, was to, to adopt that, to recommend to this body to accept that number.
And, and I know that we accepted that this morning without any objection, so?
Right.
I'm just staying for the record, uh, that, so that our listening audience can understand that, that the invitation was made, and that the, the Economist was also here this morning, just to know, and I, he was here all morning, and I just want to say that it was a fine job, and I think we can continue to proceed from that, uh, moving forward, so we can get past this. I do know that there's several other bills that may be of vital urgency, too, that may need to be attended to, so I, I, I think it's important that we just continue to move forward. And if there's any questions, uh, like I said, if that invitation is still out there to call the administration, then it's, it, we'll wait for them to come, but we can continue to move forward from, from here on.
Yes, and we'll continue to, uh, to reach out. Uh, I'm sure my staff's listening, and, where I'm asking them again, to please make that contact once more. Senator Blas?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I, I just want to qualify this. I don't think that there's anybody in this, in this body here that is going to question the work that you, that, that you and your committee has done with this. You know, I pre, I appreciate the presentation that was given by, by Chris this morning. It was very insightful. Um, but, you know, that said, this is a deliberative body, and when you're talking about an issue such as this, which is really what the mandate and what, what our sole responsibility is as a legislature, I think that we would be remiss not to be afforded, although there were questions and although there were opportunities that could have been presented previously, to question some of these figures. You know, there, I, I can recall on, on a number of occasions, when we did prepare budgets or we did prepare, um, you know, fiscal matters, that anomalies occurred, you know, and things had happened that could have changed, uh, what these numbers were back then to today. Take case in point, last year's budget, nobody anticipated the crash of the stock market. That drastically affected what a number of us, a lot of us, had felt would be something attainable, achievable in as far as a budget. I, I have to go ahead and, and, and also, uh, express my, 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 my request that administration officials be made available, so that some of these questions can be asked and, and answered with, with respect to some of the real-time events that are occurring and how we're, how we're able to do this. It's not to stop or to impede the process. I think this is an integral part of the process. Um, and, and really, once we get past that, I think everything should be smooth sailing after that. So thank you, Ms. Speaker.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Cruz, Vice Speaker?
We may have been provided with a reason to take a break at this point. I've been informed that the Codel is here and would like to make a presentation to the legislature.
Okay.
It's, it's just a very informal flag presentation.
All right.
They've arrived, and if we could take a short recess and go meet them outside?
Okay.
And welcome them in, um, that might give us time to have the staff call again?
Yes.
So that we get these people here.
All right. On that, on that motion to recess, no objections? We're in a recess. Okay. Ready? The Committee of the House is back in session. At last, we were talking with Senator Blas. Senator Blas, were you pretty much concluded your statements?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Again, just want to reiterate the, what I feel is the importance for this, for us to have that discourse with the administration. Recognizing too that there has been previous meetings. There's still maybe a need to ask questions that, you know, as a result of real-time events that occur that may have affected some of these numbers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We did make contact. Ms. Duñez is under the weather, I believe. Lou Paris, the Director of Administration, is unable to make it at this time, right now. We're trying to get a confirmation for appearance, possibly tomorrow. Mr. Guy Hiles, I think will be available also. He was here monitoring, of course, the discussion that we were having. And will be available. And we're trying to get additional members of the Governor's Financial Management Team to be represented at this hearing. At this time, we would like to go ahead and maybe just offer opportunities for comment for anyone who wishes to comment or ask for any questions and classifications. I also want to note to apprise the members of the body with regards to the revenues and the treatment of some of the revenues that are treated differently than in the past. Last year, we had created this Better Public Service Fund, which is a portion of the fees collected at Department of Revenue and Taxation. And last year, all of the fees are accounted for in license and permits for, in the general revenues statements that you see and the line item on this. Last year, the Better Public Service was included in the license and fees and never backed out. So we actually almost counted it twice. We counted it first as part of the license and fees, and then we appropriated it in the body of the legislature, which meant we accounted for that revenue twice. This year, we're separating that out, and that's what you see under license and fees. For example, on page three, there's a reduction of 588 on line six of that page, line seven, under license fees and permits. In parentheses, you see Better Public Service Fund. We backed that 588, 508, out of the general revenue because we're appropriating it in another section. There are two areas where that occurs in terms of the backing out of that revenue. One's in the Highway Fund because part of the assessment of fees is the motor vehicle registration. So we backed that out again because we're accounting for it under the Territorial Highway Fund. And so I just wanted to note that to the body with regards to the treatment of those funds.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just on the license fees, permits, the Better Public Service Fund, and you said you were backing it out and showing it on another section, do you have that section where you'll show that 588?
Right. Chris, why don't you go ahead?
The sum of the two sources is equal to the Better Public Service Fund. So if you take the number under the license fees and permits and also under the Guam Highway Fund and add them together, that is the revenue that goes into the Better Public Service Fund.
Okay, just wanted to note that for my records. Thank you, Si, Jesus, mase.
Thank you very much. Senator Palacios and then Senator Tanore.
So just a general comment on the budget itself?
Yes.
I noticed that this is an object class. Now, for example, if they're showing a zero amount for, say, drug testing charges, does that mean that that agency cannot then expend money to do drug testing?
No. The budget bill allows for the Governor to transfer within the executive branch appropriations between object categories as well as between departments and agencies of the executive branch budget.
Okay. Just my, I guess my cursory review of this. For example, the Department of Administration, there is a zero amount showing for drug testing. And my understanding is that all new hires for line agencies, of course, are required to undergo drug testing. And I understand that DOA pays for that, for the initial hiring. And then, of course, I noticed there's no money for GPD, for corrections. For the Fire Department, it's only 175. But that's why I asked whether they can still do drug testing despite the zero amount. And you explained, of course, that then they can go through the...
If I remember and recall correctly, Senator, depending on the position, the department or agency will pay for the drug test. But as a general rule, I think for applicants making an application with the Department of Administration, the applicant pays for the drug test.
The applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So that's my observation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Senator Tanore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify something you mentioned earlier about the backing out of the 588,00508. And that is, you authored that fund, which is the Better Public Service Fund. And if I remember, that's 10% of the additional fees which were added in the previous legislation we had adopted. Is that correct? It's 10%?
No, it's 10% of the fees collected by the Department of Revenue and Taxation, not additional fees. 10% of the fees.
Right, right. So if you get $100 and $10 goes to that Better Public Service Fund, right?
No. The way that it works, within those funds, only certain monies that go into them are collected by the Department of Revenue and Tax. So it's a portion of the overall fund. So, for instance, if Revenue and Tax collects certain license and fees that get put into those funds, that only accounts for a certain small percentage of the overall fund. And only the money that RevTax collects goes into the Better Public Service Fund.
So the 588 is a percentage of another figure? Or is it just a set amount?
No, it's a percentage.
Of which figure, though? Because I'm looking at license and fees at 5.3 and...
We can provide the breakdown. There's probably about 40 different revenue accounts that are tracked by the Division of Accounts. And within those revenue accounts, they get 10% of those numbers. And the Bureau of Budget has those. We can provide them.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Senator Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I once again want to commend you and your staff for doing a phenomenal job in putting together these models and budget for all of us. You know, this being my first budget hearing, please bear with me as I struggle through this and try and do what the people of Guam, I believe, elected me to do. Help come up with a better public service that fully serves the needs of our people. You know, I was just looking at CPIs, at the CPI for the last six years on Guam, and we've had over 35% inflation over the last six years on Guam, according to the Bureau of Statistics and Plan at UOG. And yet somehow I doubt if the budget for the government of Guam has gone up over 35% over the last six years, which leads me to believe that we're not even giving the quantity and quality of public service to our people today that they received just six years ago. And that's just not right. Cuts in public services hurt those that can least afford it. You know, the predominant users of our public structure are the elderly, are the children, the physically and mentally challenged, and the working class. You know, every society is judged on how we treat those most in need in our society. In fact, isn't it the Bible that says, Jesus once says, "What you do for the least of my brothers, you do for me." And just about every other religion says exactly the same thing. So I'm going to try my best in this budget process to work with you and the models you've created, to try and come up with a budget and a process that once again gives back to our people the quality of public service and the quality of our public structure that each and every family on Guam deserves. And once again, I want to thank you for your help in soldiering me through this difficult process, my first time through it. So once again, I commend you and your staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? There was a motion to adopt this section, the revenue section? Any questions?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I can't stress enough how yourself and the Office of Finance Budget, together with administration officials, those who are involved in the SAS and SES process, have done extreme due diligence. Now, if there's some members that are not comfortable with the revenue estimate that was adopted by that statutory process, then I think it's incumbent of these members to do an amendment or provide an amendment to the body to either revise these revenue projections upward or downward. I believe a motion to adopt these revenue projections are in order, Mr. Chairman. And any attempt to delay this without any other amendment from them would just be contrary to trying to have a budget process that's fair and smooth. And so I think the motion is in order.
All right. Senator Tanore?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. And I understand the process. I had voted for the law as well. I have no problem with that. My point is that we've said, and you've been here from, what, 3:00 this afternoon, now two hours, actually less than two hours. We deliberated in previous budgets and granted much longer process, two, three days in the revenues, and we've gone through methodically each one of those with the administration officials here. Now, these SAEC and SAS are here to facilitate these proceedings. We're still representative of democracy, and we're still in the process of deliberating these numbers. And you have said that the representatives of RevTax, DOA, and BBMR, as well as others, have been told about these proceedings and asked to be here. But here to four, we haven't had anyone here. So it's one minute from 5:00. Tomorrow morning, we're hopeful, I am at least, that we'll be able to speak with these administration officials here in this session hall, as we normally have in every budget process here to four, so we make sure the transparent process of adopting revenue is based on not just the work product, which you have very, very well done, and it's been commented on by all of our colleagues here, but make sure that the entire process is given an opportunity to be vetted by other administration officials. It's not questioning the process, it's questioning the fact that we have administration officials who also represent the same figures to us, and at the end of it, we get the opportunity to vet it. So I'm asking to recess, it's now 5:00, until 9:00 tomorrow morning, at which time the administration officials are requested to be here so that we can proceed and ask any questions of then before we do the final adoption.
All right. I tell you what, I certainly appreciate that. It is 5:00. Let me just advise the body. Each of the numbers that are placed in this are gathered from published and available financial statements of the government of Guam. And I'm going to, although the motion is in order to adopt the revenues, I will allow the members of this body the opportunity to review those financial statements. And if you have a problem or a question on those financial statements, we'll respond to them for those individuals that are responsible for that. We are contacting the administration officials. I'll bring them in, I'll ask them to be here at 9:00. But please, understand that, you know, the numbers are not something that we concocted. The numbers are real. The methodology for how we got using the data sets that we have to the revenue projection that we have was explained to you this morning. And that's, it's not brand new. The good Senator, Senator Eddie Calvo, contributed in his efforts as chairman of the Office of Finance and Budget last year with regards to a large portion of this financial model that produced this revenue. We've refined them a little bit, and we've worked with the model and, in our opinion, have improved on it. So it's not, it's not brand new, and we will, we're going to invite, I'm going to invite the administration officials. If you have a different way of doing some calculations, would certainly appreciate and entertain that and so forth. So I will recess this...
Mr. Chair, just a point of information on this matter. Based on that, before your recess, we will come in with a motion tomorrow, even if the folks from the administration come in. The motion is on hand at 9:00 tomorrow to adopt these revenues as we talked about today.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yes.
There's...
Yes. I will lay the motion to adopt the revenues on the table and call a recess su espante pursuant to our authority in the standing rules. And again, we will invite the administration officials. Please, you know, review the financial statements, redo the financial audits, as certainly Senator Calvo has indicated he has. And we're looking for any alternate methodologies of arriving at them and the presentation of those alternative methodologies. So we will recess this hearing until 9:00 AM.